Good evening. I'd like to welcome you all to the March 21st, 2017 Vista Planning Commission meeting. Commissioner Carroll, will you lead us in the pledge, please?
Pledge of the Union States of America and the Constitution of America for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Turley, will you call the roll? Commissioner Carroll?
Here.
Chairman Kramer?
Here.
Commissioner Bell?
Here.
Commissioner Garretson?
Here.
Commissioner Jackal?
Here.
Commissioner Rosler?
Here.
Commissioner Looney?
Yes.
And Student Commissioner Jonah Cranford is here. Felix Aguado is not absent. He has an excused absence. Commissioners, in front of you are the meeting minutes from our February 7th, 2017, meeting. If there are changes, please note and let us know. If not, can someone make a motion, please? Commissioner Jackal?
I move approval of the minutes of February 7th as presented.
Commissioner Carroll?
I'll second the motion.
Let the record show that the minutes from the February 7th, 2017, passed as presented. Thank you. Mr. Conley, are there any agenda changes for this evening?
No changes, Chairman.
Thank you. All right. Before we begin to work on the items from this evening's agenda, first is if anyone desires to speak on anything that is not on this evening's agenda. I have one speaker slip, but if anyone else would like to speak, please fill out a speaker slip and come forward. So Sharon Reed, please. Good evening, Ms. Reed. State your name and give your address.
My name is Sharon Reed at 145 Marvista Drive in Mar Vista. I live on Marvista Drive in Phillips Street. I'd like to speak about two concerns in relation to the building of the 72 condos on the corner of South Santa Fe and Mar Vista, specifically the traffic and quiet zone. The intersection of Phillips and Mar Vista is 500 feet from the property.
...the 72 condos. Imagine I have an appointment. I'm sitting in my car at the corner of Phillips, waiting to turn left or north on Mar Vista to reach South Santa Fe. Ordinary traffic exists, and I'm waiting for a break in the traffic, looking both ways, before proceeding with my turn left. In the morning, on my left, the traffic is backed up to Santa Fe Drive as drivers make their way to Hanalee School or the freeway entrance. Reverse that in the evening, when the cars are backed up to the motel and half need to go to Santa Fe Drive. I'm waiting at my corner to turn left. No break in the cars going by. Add now cars from 72 condos and a proposed traffic circle, which will keep the traffic moving. Three major residential streets are coming into that traffic circle, which is way too small to accommodate the volume of cars. I'm still waiting to inch out to exit Phillips Street. The cars are still constant. Okay. My second concern is the train noise, which affects whoever will purchase a condo at a train crossing. I live on Mar Vista Drive and the railroad tracks. I know the Sprinter begins running at 4:15 a.m., Monday through Friday, and then four times each hour throughout the day until 9:30 p.m. Our crossing produces bells, whistles, horns, five minutes before, five minutes after, each hour and half hour. Two long blasts, a short, and another long blast. Because of the Sprinter running all day, the freight trains are now at 11:00 p.m. going east and 1:00 a.m. going west, two times a week. They must give two-long, a-short, and another long blast. This disruption of peace and quiet, not to mention sleep, and property value, has a solution. Create a quiet zone in residential areas. It is possible. Perhaps if these condo builders and owners would get together with the city council to create a quiet zone, the project might be more palatable for both current residents and the future residents. In conclusion, I invite any of you to come to my home. Sit, and watch, and listen to our plea. Please come on a weekday morning or late afternoon. The cars will be coming from the left and right. The railroad crossing arms will come down. The Sprinter will blow its horn, and I will probably still be at the stop sign on Phillips trying to turn left. [laughing]. Oh, did I mention that the inland bike trail also will connect at that corner? But another time for that subject. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, also in front of you, same-subject manner is a letter from Mary Jabe. So I just wanted to make sure that you saw that. Thank you very much, Ms. Reed. Your comments will go on the record. Mr. Conley, can we hear about P. 17-0093, City of Vista?
Thank you, Chairman and Commissioner. This is a public hearing for amendments to the mixed-use zone and the city's design guidelines for multifamily development. The Planning Commission reviewed the mixed-use zone and the downtown specific plan to discuss development standards in October of last year and made recommendations to the city council to change the mixed-use zone to require stricter standards for residential-only development within the zone. The city council reviewed the Planning Commission's recommendations in January on two occasions, one on the 10th and the second on the 24th, to provide direction to staff on those recommendations, as well as some changes that they specifically recommended to the zone. Those included a zoning code amendment to amend development standards, rezoning of certain properties, and amending the design guidelines. So tonight I'll cover the development standard changes in the mixed-use zone and the design guideline changes, but the rezones have to go through CEQA environmental review, and so they'll have to come back at a later date. Also to note that the...both bodies didn't recommend any changes to the downtown specific plan, so none of those are recommended this evening. So the mixed-use zone amendments specifically address setbacks, building height, parking, landscaping, the North Santa Fe overlay zone, which is an area where the city council asks for some different standards and design guidelines, and I'll cover each one of those. This is a graphic that shows the extent of the mixed-use zone within Vista. You can note the properties along Melrose, for the most part, are developed or have been approved for development. There's a few remaining pieces that the city council asked to be rezoned, which, like I said, will come back. But for the most part, the development standards that we're recommending tonight would affect the areas along North Santa Fe, which are between Vista Village and Beau-Bier largely, Civic Center Drive between Eucalyptus and South Santa Fe, and then along South Santa Fe in the area of Mar Vista. So any new development in those areas would be subject to the new standards this evening. So the first task we had was to distinguish between residential-only and mixed-use projects. To make that simple, and considering the kind of extent of areas remaining, staff's recommending that commercial or mixed-use projects be required to have all commercial floor space on the ground floor. So that would distinguish a residential-only project from a commercial project. If it didn't have all commercial floor space on the ground floor, it would fall under the residential-only category. It would still allow residential above, but at least on the ground floor. That could include some flexibility in terms of live-work space or office space for leasing offices for residential above or recreational facilities for residential above, but for the most part, it couldn't be residential units. To start in the area of setbacks, the residential-only projects would be subject to new setbacks. These would be consistent with the RM zone, which applies to multifamily elsewhere within the city. The setbacks are listed here: 20 feet in the front, 15 on the street side, 15 on the interior side, 10 feet between buildings, 15 in the rear property, and anything that would abut a single-family residential zone would have a 15-foot setback for the first story...first and second story. Sorry, that's a typo. And 25 for the third story or more. These are different than the North Santa Fe overlay zone, which I'll cover separately. In the category of building height, staff had recommended specific reductions in building height along Civic Center and South Santa Fe to three stories. However, after considering the North Santa Fe overlay zone covers the remainder, for the most part, of the mixed-use zone, the outlying areas really don't make sense to leave at four stories, so staff is simply recommending that it be three stories across the board within the mixed-use zone, with the exception of the North Santa Fe overlay zone, which would remain at four stories. Additional building height could still be permitted with specific approval of the Planning Staff was increased to...asked to increase the parking standards for residential projects to, again, meet the citywide requirements. They're listed here: 2.3 spaces for a studio or one bedroom, 2.5 spaces for a two-bedroom, and 3 spaces for a three-bedroom, going up a half-space for each bedroom. That would include the guest spaces listed. The North Santa Fe overlay zone was allowed to maintain the downtown specific plan standards, which I'll cover in a later slide. The landscaping was asked to be increased from 10% to 15%, which, again, meets our citywide requirement. That's reflected in the ordinance that's before you, and the modification to that standard would, again, be subject to the Planning Commission's approval. So the North Santa Fe overlay zone was specifically discussed by the city council. There was some consensus that they wanted to promote development in that area, and so the standards...certain standards were asked to be reduced. Those include setbacks, which were set at 10 feet on all sides. The building height was left at 60 feet or four stories. The parking, meeting the downtown specific plan standards, which I'll show you, and the landscaping to remain at 10%. The area shown on the right here includes all of the properties along North Santa Fe that would be within the overlay zone. It was asked between Beau-Bier and Vista Village, which is all those properties, excluding the Stater Brothers Center, because that will be rezoned back to commercial. The parking standards in the downtown specific plan that would apply in this area are comparable to what was in the mixed-use zone before: 1.25 spaces for a studio or one bedroom, 2.25 for a two-bedroom, 2.75 for a three-bedroom or more. The Planning Commission also asked that the council amend the design guidelines. We talked about this before: one, amenity for projects of 10 or more dwelling units; two, for 25 or more; and three, for 50 or more. This is different from the current standards, which are set at 25, 50, and 100 units. The council concurred with this recommendation, and so that is also reflected in the resolution tonight as a formal recommendation to the city council. So per our development code, any zoning code amendment requires a formal recommendation by the Planning Commission. That's what's before you this evening. All property owners within the mixed-use zone and those within 500 feet of the mixed-use zone were notified of tonight's hearing, and staff is requesting the Planning Commission's recommendation to the council regarding those proposed amendments, and that completes my staff report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Conley. I have one question. The Stater Brothers Center, was that changed to mixed-use, and that's why we're changing it back to commercial, or...?
It's currently mixed-use. There were a number of properties that were recommended by the city council to be rezoned. Those include Breeze Hill, Beau-Bier, the commercial centers at Stater Brothers and Vons, some properties along Service Place. All of those are being evaluated right now for environmental. There'll be a public document released for those in the next month or so, and then, once that review period is complete, we'll bring those back to the Planning Commission.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Carroll?
Thank you, Chairman. Mr. Conley, the 10-foot setback on all sides in the North Santa Fe overlay zone, on the front yard setback, how does that compare to what is...what it is now for those...for that area?
The setbacks in the mixed-use zone are currently zero on the front side and street, so it would be 10 feet more than what's required today.
Okay, so I didn't realize that. So right now, it can be built right up to the right-of-way?
That's correct.
Okay, thanks.
Commissioner Jackal, please.
Thank you. I have two questions. Mr. Conley, this letter that we got from Mary Jabe about the proposed apartment complex at Mar Vista and South Santa Fe?
Yes.
Is that one of the projects that will be considered grandfathered under the old development standards, or will they fall under the new ones?
So that project has a 96-unit apartment development that was approved. That's a valid entitlement for the property. They have...another applicant has submitted an application for a 72-unit condominium development, 70-something. I don't remember the exact number, I'm sorry. That's pending, so it's going through the planning department. The typical cutoff for new rules being required of a project is at the time it's deemed complete, and so it's been reviewed by the staff for conformity to our zoning. It's going through that process right now, but it has not been deemed complete. The city council's going to be asked to review those projects that are pending as part of their approval of any changes to the zone when this goes before them, and that question will most likely be asked by the applicant.
Okay. Thank you. And then my other question is about the North Santa Fe overlay zone. I understand the council's wanting to stimulate development in that area, and this just seems to be, to me, really harsh for the people who live there. It's increasing the density and everything, to me, tremendously, lessening the landscaping, lessening the parking. I just feel this is going to make it worse rather than better, and that's just my opinion.
Okay. Any other questions, Commissioners? If not, I have a speaker slip. Okay. Kier Cederas? Please state your name and give your address, please.
Hi there. Claire Cederas, 1558 North Manor Drive. My wife and I bought the parcel six months ago. We know infinitely less than all of you here about the City of Vista or from Los Angeles. Just had a couple of general observations and requests. It seems like real estate follows a cycle, and it's like boom time, and then it slows down, and there's less construction. And it seems to me that we're entering the less-construction phase, because interest rates seem to be going up. And if the city desires to have construction happening now for this cycle, then you wait a decade of no construction, and it starts again, presumably. Encouragement should be made to developers to develop the properties. So to me, it's an opportunity that might be slipping away with the tightening that I briefly looked at. And I wanted to suggest one thing and ask a question. I've attended some ULI Urban Land Institute meetings. I went to law school. I've been in real estate for a long time, but I don't know what everybody here knows, especially the gentleman here. But it seems like, from a quick search, that some cities provide economic motivations to developers to develop the properties, and that could be by reduced fees. The benefit to the city, I would think, would be that they get greater income, because when you build something, the property taxes are going to be way higher than vacant land. And so there's an advantage to the city. So I was thinking that perhaps that could be analyzed and seen if it makes sense for Vista. And that could be by reducing the cost to developers and having to provide greater utilities or sewage or electrical or water or street, those sort of things. From what I read in a 10-minute search, it could be done through tax benefits of some type as well. So it seems to me that if we want to take advantage of the current cycle for development, we could encourage by giving some kind of an economic incentive, and rather than doing it to everyone, perhaps to get the domino effect going, it could be the first 10 projects that come along, get this benefit that the city is providing, to incentivize people to construct on the mixed-use properties, since that is the objective, I think, is to incentivize development by reducing the standards, I think, and other being tightened. So that was it. The other one is, our property is just north of Beau-Bier, and it's only 10 parcels, and we wondered why that doesn't stay in the overlay zone. I'm sure you have reasons for that, but it only affects a small number of parcels. And with little knowledge of Vista, I think that's a poor part of Vista. And in the poor part of Vista, I don't think you can exact, I don't think, high standards of landscaping and parking, and for a studio to have 2.25 parking spaces when it's going to be a single person in a studio, I suppose. I don't know if that's the reason, or the reason is to make it so unattractive that a developer will therefore build two- and three-bedroom units, because the parking is skewed. So if you're going to be requiring two-plus parking spaces, then by golly, build a three-bedroom. It's not clear to me, but it doesn't quite make sense. And so, yeah, if it's possible to consider looking at economic motivation stimulus to the next 10 projects, if that works well to the city's satisfaction, then they can say the next 10. Or, like in Los Angeles, if you go there, where we work all the time, there's cranes everywhere, and the first few people had a hard time, but now it's steamrolled to where there's endless construction.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, Commissioners, I have no other speaker slips. Comments? Any other comments or questions? I personally think that the recommendations that we made to staff, who in turn took those in front of the city council, that those are...are and remain to be good recommendations. Ms. Jackal, I certainly understand where you're coming from, and...but I'm not sure it's timely now, so...Commissioner Garretson?
Mr. Conley, just a question about amenities. I appreciate what has been proposed here in terms of numbers. Though we're here, though, do we talk about size or quality? Meaning, is a swimming pool a above-ground lot? Is it...does it accommodate 20 people? Does it accommodate 40 people? Or a gymnasium or exercise room? How do you go through that process and determine whether that amenity is sufficient to satisfy the regulation?
So what we have determined is that it's not one-size-fits-all. It's very difficult to come up with parameters for amenities, because projects are also variable based on space and size. Generally, at the staff level, when we review them, if there's a pool or a jacuzzi, we'll try to come...you know, we'll try to determine whether or not it's appropriately sized in terms of the number of units they're proposing to what's being recommended in terms of amenity. There are some minimum open space requirements that they have to meet. That typically goes toward it, but really, that's reviewed by staff, and it's at the commission's discretion. I don't know if there's any better way to handle it.
Well, I don't know either. It's just that, I don't know, it seems to...pretty general to me that as long as you call it a pool or an exercise room, regardless of how many residents it accommodates, it still satisfies the regulation. So I know staff goes through that review, and staff, you know, would be able to make a determination and a recommendation, but nothing beyond that, though.
At this point, we don't really have what we feel is appropriate regulatory language to put in there that would better, you know, guide amenities. It's, like I said, it's such a variable issue that if you try to hammer it down to specifics, you end up causing all kinds of problems for individual projects. So, I mean, if you...let's put it this way. I did a lot of research to try to see what other cities do. There's not very many other cities that require amenities, so it was hard to find examples, but most of them are numeric like this. It's very...or there's square footage requirements for open space common area, and there are requirements for what can go in that, but none of them say they must be this size. It was...I couldn't find anything like that.
Got you. Overall, though, I really like this revision. It's really, I think, addresses the concerns of the Planning Commission, and it seems to address what transpired at the city council meeting as well. Thank you.
Commissioner Rosler?
I agree with Commissioner Garretson. This is going in the direction that we recommended to the council. I do have one concern concerning the parking on the North Santa Fe overlay zone. There's a significant amount...and when you look at the map, there's a significant amount of properties that this will apply to, and I'm...I think, out of all of it, the thing that I'm most concerned about is the one-bedroom parking with one space plus a quarter of a guest space. Thinking about that neighborhood and the folks that live there, the likelihood of a couple moving in there, but I think both would have two cars, and so I'm just a little concerned about that. Would changing that to two cars per unit and maybe reducing the guest par down to a third...no, a quarter would still be less, to a quarter...leaving it at a quarter. Is that going to cause heartburn for folks, do you think?
So it's the Planning Commission's recommendation. You can phrase it however you want. It's going to go to the city council. We'll present the staff recommendations that we made tonight, but we'll also include any specifics that the Planning Commission wants them to consider.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Commissioner Carroll?
I was actually going to make a motion, but I can see Mr. Looney, he has some comments, so I can...I'll just yield to you for now.
Just one, and that was regarding your comment about the amenities. Most of these projects, John, are going to come to Planning Commission anyway, are they not?
Ninety percent of them, I would say.
And so I would think we would have some voice into what that amenity might be based upon, you know, our opinion of that environment and that development, and then we can, I think, make that decision as to whether or not it goes to a totlot, or gym, or a pool. I think we still have that flexibility in doing it.
Absolutely.
For the North Santa Fe overlay zone, I would really like to ask that the landscaping be increased to 15%. I just feel we need something that's more humanizing.
Commissioner Carroll?
Thank you, Chairman. So thank you to staff and to council also for listening to not only the Planning Commission, but I think the public in general, as last year-plus with the mixed-use projects that have come through, and we've all felt this loophole that has been giving us projects a little bit more dense and not quite fitting than we're comfortable with, but couldn't really do much about because of the guidelines. really do much about because of the guidelines. So thanks for that. And since we're here making our recommendations based on what we feel and what we want to see for Vista, I have no problem with making the recommendation to approve this as written with the change of the North Santa Fe Overlay Zone for one bedroom to two spaces plus a quarter guest space, and to change the landscape standard from 10% to 15%. That's the motion.
Commissioner Rosler?
I'd second that motion.
Comments? Commissioner Garretson?
I support the proposal, but I don't support the increasing of the parking or the landscaping in that area, simply because it's going to make it that much more difficult to develop in an area that needs development badly. And I think it's just going to keep people from wanting to develop there.
Thank you. Please vote. Please let the record show that the motion passes with the exception of Commissioner Garretson voting against it. Thank you. Mr. Conley, would you like to lead us through P-17-0094?
Thank you, Chairman. This is regarding wireless communication facilities. So the staff has undertaken a proposed amendment to the zoning code specific to wireless communication facilities, since we really don't have very good guidance right now, based on some changes in federal and state law, as well as installations proposed within the right-of-way. We're recommending adoption of a couple of new ordinances. One would regulate wireless facilities not covered by federal law, which are termed as new and substantially changed wireless communication facilities. And one would regulate those that are covered by the federal law, which is termed as 6409A projects. And so there's a lot of detailed information around this topic. We've consulted with an attorney who's here tonight that helped us put together his, his name's Tripp May. He's going to come up and do-
His name again, please?
Tripp May. And he's going to come up and do the first few slides, kind of on the rules and regulations, and then I'll cover some of the specifics to our zoning code amendments.
Thank you.
Good evening, Chair Kramer. Planning Commissioners, my name is Tripp May. I am your telecommunications outside counsel. And I've been asked to give you a brief overview of the federal regulations because they drive a lot of the complexity that you've seen in these documents. They actually divide them into two. And not to overly, be overly technical, but the first ordinance is also highly driven by federal law. And so we'll start with those basic provisions. There are, the bedrock that we stand on is the Telecom Act, 1996. And it has, for wireless facilities, three substantive limitations and two major procedural ones, and we'll go through these fairly quickly. The first major one is that you cannot effectively prohibit wireless facilities. That means no blanket bans, and no systematic denial of facilities or regulations that would make it impossible for a carrier to complete their own network. Out of that, the courts have given us a test. They call it the significant gap test. Means that if there is a significant gap in a carrier's or an applicant's coverage, and they're proposing the least intrusive means to fill that coverage, we have to allow that facility to come in even if it's not consistent with the provisions of our municipal or zoning code, in this case, development code. The second substantive limitation is you cannot unreasonably discriminate amongst functionally-equivalent service providers. This requires techno, technical neutrality. We don't favor one type of equipment over another. We don't favor one type of carrier over another. But we have the ability to reasonably discriminate, so we don't have to repeat the mistakes of the past, and we can treat things that are reasonably different differently. The third is that we cannot regulate on the basis of the environmental effects of radio frequency emissions, to the extent that they comply with the FCC's regulations. The FCC sets what they call the maximum permissible exposure level, and if the facility has been shown to be within that exposure level, given the environment that it's in, the context and its location, then that's the end of the inquiry for the local government. If it doesn't comply, you have the ability to regulate it on that basis, but if it does, that's the end of the story. I want to focus real quickly on that significant gap test we talked about because it is very important to the ordinance. We call this the safety valve, meaning that you can write an ordinance that has all the provisions that you would want in an ideal world, but so long as you have a test that gives yourself an out to create an exception for when you need to grant a variance without having to grant an actual full-blown variance, because the standards under federal law are slightly different than what you would have under your normal variance test. So we use the significant gap least intrusive means test for that. We don't focus so heavily on the significant gap aspect of it, and that's for a couple of reasons. One, nobody really knows what it means. Carriers and the applicants can't prove that they have one. We can't prove that they don't have one, and when it gets to the courts, they usually back up and punt. So it's kind of a rabbit hole you spend a lot of money chasing after these questions that don't have good answers to. We skip over it. Instead, we focus on the least intrusive means test. This is something we can sink our teeth into. The courts have said that this is the design, the location, that is the least noncompliant with the local value that you would have denied it for. So I use height as a good example. If a carrier comes in and says, I need a facility that's 75 feet tall in a 35-foot zone, the least intrusive means is going to be the shortest possible tower that is going to allow the carrier to achieve its technical goals. It may not be 75 feet, it may not be 35 feet, but that local value expressed in your zone height limit sets the baseline, and then we test out from there. And we go back and forth. We ask questions. That's why we have detailed application requirements, requiring the carriers to give a meaningful explanation as to why 75 feet is the absolute lowest, or go through the steps of proving that maybe it could go a little lower. So that's the test that we want to follow. There's some exceptions to it. If they can prove that it just won't work from a technical perspective, they won't be able to achieve some reasonable level of coverage, then, okay, they don't have to adopt something lower or less intrusive. Or if they can prove that they can't get a lease, that area, the space where you want that tower to go, that site to go, is just not available to them, then, okay, that's a practical limitation. But that's an important test, so I just wanted to briefly take a step back and go into that in more detail. On the procedural side, all applications have to be acted on in a reasonable time. The FCC has told us what that means. It's 60 days for what we call eligible facilities requests governed under that 6409 ordinance that we'll talk about. It's 90 days for co-locations, basically bigger changes to existing facilities than are those covered under the 6409 regulations. And then 150 days for everything else, including new sites. All denials have to be issued in writing based on substantial evidence in the record. That means that you have to give them the reasons for your denial at the time that you deny it, within that timeframe. And so the rules and regulations in the ordinance have been structured that way, to give guidance to the city and the staff about how they're supposed to properly fulfill their duties to issue that decision. And as far as substantial evidence goes, it's a relatively low standard, deferential to you, and it just means the amount of evidence that a reasonable person would accept as supporting a conclusion, whether other people would agree or not. It also requires that that evidence be tied to a provision in your local code that gives you a basis for that decision. That's why you see all the detail in there about what it is you'd like to see with these facilities. The right-of-way is a special, there are just special rules for it. Under the Telecom Act, we have Section 253, and it says, again, you cannot prohibit or effectively prohibit any carrier's ability to provide telecommunications service, but we have a carve-out, and that's under 253(c). It says that we can still impose competitively neutral and nondiscriminatory rights-of-way management rules, and we can require fair and reasonable compensation. This is a safe harbor. So even if our rules and regulations would effectively prohibit somebody from providing telecommunications services, if it's reasonable, nondiscriminatory, competitively neutral, related to the right-of-way management, the regulation is safe. State law has special rules in the right-of-way, too. One of the earliest laws California ever adopted in 1851 was this Section 7901 granting a statewide franchise to any telephone corporation who wanted to come out and provide services as their way of governing the broad state. And it says that the telephone corporations have a right to use the streets, to the extent necessary to provide services to the public, in a way that does not incommode the public's use. That's a very arcane term. It's been recently interpreted to mean not just physical obstruction, but also aesthetic impacts, unreasonable aesthetic impacts on legitimate interests in the right-of-way. So your investment-back expectations with design overlays, districts, scenic vistas, view sheds, ridge lines, things like that. And we also have 7901.1, which says, as far as the construction rules go, they have to be even-handed. Everybody gets treated the same. And the right-of-way is being, is a hot topic in telecommunications right now. The networks for almost all the major carriers are built out. The big issue is how do those networks perform? And they're building overlays with these types of facilities. And this is what, this is your typical small cell installed in the right-of-way. This is taken in Pennsylvania, and the company here is Crown Castle. This has all the basic elements. You've got an antenna at the top, it's on a pole. Your utilities are served usually from overhead lines with equipment cages for the radios, and that bottom thing you see there is a backup battery unit. Other carriers have similar types of designs, unconcealed, as you can see, but this isn't necessarily the way it has to be. It can look much better, right? This is exactly the same as the facilities that you saw in the previous slides, except there's no power meter here and no backup batteries. The reason why there's no power meter is San Diego Gas and Electric allows a flat-rate billing for these types of facilities. So if you can kind of see in your mind, the way that we've adopted these ordinances is to work within those legal rules about what we can and cannot do in the right-of-way, to funnel projects into this type of outcome rather than this kind of outcome. I want to touch briefly on what I mentioned before as Section 6409. This is a special federal rule that says cities and states cannot deny any to application that would modify or co-locate on an existing wireless tower or base station, so long as that project doesn't cause a substantial change. And the FCC defined this for us. A substantial change could mean, let's say, on private property, an increase of 20 feet, or an increase in, 20 feet in height or 20 feet in width, right? So it seems like it's fairly large. In the right-of-way, it's 10 feet taller or 6 feet wider. There are a lot of other criteria that we have to take into account, too. So because we have a mandate to approve these things, and there's a very highly technical analysis that you have to go through to make sure that it checks all the boxes for the criteria about what constitutes a substantial change, we have a separate ordinance that deals with those. The FCC also has special rules about what you can and cannot require in terms of application materials for these applications, and they require us to process them faster. So again, we have separate rules to make sure that staff, the public, the applicants know which rules are applicable to which projects, right when they come in, and nothing gets left in the shuffle with such a short timeframe. The reason why we're so concerned about time is that if you fail to meet that 60-day shot clock for these types of projects, it's automatically deemed granted by law. And recently, California adopted a similar law for every other project, so that if you fail to meet that 90- or 150-day shot clock, it also could be deemed automatically approved by law. So we've built those procedural protections in there so make sure that these things don't fall through the cracks. We've also built in standardized conditions of approval that are automatically applied to projects that maybe do fall through the cracks. That way, you have the base level of protections you would have associated with these projects if they were to go through the normal process. With that, I'm here to answer any questions you have, but I'll turn it back over to John.
So I just wanted to kind of briefly cover the chapters that we're recommending for you tonight, and some of the aspects to our code that we implemented in terms of our recommendations. So the first chapter is 1892. This is the new and substantially changed wireless facilities, so these are any of those that don't fall under that federal umbrella of substantial change. So they're subject to our review. We review these currently under the special and minor use permit processes. Special use permits comes to the Planning Commission. Minor use permits are done at the zoning administrator level and are appealable to the Planning Commission, so you're notified when we approve those, and they're appealable to you or onto the City Council. So for the minor use permit, we have some provisions for preferred locations, and I'll cover those. Anything that doesn't fall under specific exemptions in the state and federal laws, or anything that's completely stealth would be a minor use permit. It'd still have to fall under certain criteria and be subject to the findings that are required in our code, but would be at an administrative level. The special use permit, higher level of discretion, would be for anything in a discouraged location, which I'll also cover, anything within 500 feet of a residence, or anything that's unconcealed. And then we have some provisions in there for temporary facilities, which are typically just short-term for maintenance, that kind of a thing. There are application materials. I'm not going to get into all the details that are specific in the code about what we require for these types of applications. They're consistent with what we typically require. This code expands our authority to ask for some additional things that we don't always ask for, like photo simulations, radio frequency compliance reports, acoustical analyses, things that are typically, can be asked for in the use permit process but aren't specific in our code until now. We also line out the procedural requirements, which mandate that they meet with the staff in a pre-submital conference, have an appointment for all of the necessary paperwork, and review what the requirement is at the time that they come to the counter with their project. There are specifics of the, for decision-making and how that works, consistent with our code for both the MUP and SUP processes. So the site-location guidelines, this was largely driven by the staff in concert with Mr. May, and we decided to look at where we would prefer to see or not see these types of facilities. So in the preferred locations, we're looking in the right-of-way first, or on city-owned property, because we obviously have more control in those situations. Next would come parcels within the Vista Business Park, Area B, which are research-light industrial zoning. We have a lot of these facilities in that area. Parcels within industrial zones, and parcels within commercial zones. So these are listed in order of preference. Discouraged locations were determined to be ordered from most to least discouraged single-family residential zones, the biological preserve overlay, which is mostly the open space areas designated open space in our general plan, the downtown-specific plan, historic district, and then the remainder of the downtown-specific plan area. I have a map here of the general plan, kind of giving you a rough idea. Most of the yellow is the single-family zones. The blue is the industrial zones, and the reddish, it kind of mixes through, the arterials is commercial zone. So we're confident that the restrictions in terms of preferred and discouraged locations will provide us a little more discretion in where these types of facilities go by making it more attractive to go in certain areas versus other, because the right-of-way extends through all of these areas, and that's at the top of the list. We're hopeful that the smaller facilities within the right-of-way that are concealed, as Tripp pointed out, are going to be the option of choice. So that's the objective. There are a number of design standards which address freestanding, building-mounted, and right-of-way facilities that are built into the code, as well as standard conditions which we would have for all of the facilities that we would review. Chapter 1894 is the second chapter that's recommended tonight. Those are the facilities that would be within the definition of not being a substantial change, and so they'd be covered under the federal law. There are some parameters under which those facilities can automatically expand, so we'd be looking at that aspect of it when we're approving projects for the first time, because they'd be able to come in and, within certain envelopes, expand their facilities only with a limited administrative review. And I listed what those parameters are, both outside and inside the right-of-way, but we'll be happy to get into more detail. Tripp has a lot of specific information on that. And then we outline the administrative process for review and approval of those permits. And that completes the staff information on this project. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Conley, I have a question, all from Mr. May's presentation. All three of those pictures are all wireless communication- All three of those pictures are all wireless communication antennas.
That's correct. All three are essentially the same technology.
And how does that differ from the palm trees that we have?
So it's interesting. These are called small cells, and the palm trees and other types of facilities you see are called macro cells, but the difference between them is not really their physical size, it's the coverage area that they serve. That serves a smaller footprint, basically about the size of a city block, whereas the palm tree that you see serves maybe about a mile, mile and a half, if it's in the right location, and they are complementary to each other. So even though we may see more of these get being built out, they won't totally replace the macro sites. They'll, they fill in capacity gaps where those big towers can't really shine their signal. If you can think about it as a flashlight, right? You have a big light on the hill, it gets a little bit everywhere, but it doesn't really focus in anywhere particular. So they're very similar. They have the same types of equipment and technology.
My next question had to do with the timing issue, the timeliness in the response. I guess this goes to you and Mr. Conley. Is there a chance that we get into a real, because we've had a real busy planning year. Lots of things have come in front of the Planning Commission. So these kind of requests come in, and if we got big stuff and we don't pay attention, they could automatically be approved?
If you don't pay attention, yes. The regulations that we're putting in front of you are designed so that they get your attention. They're also designed so that facilities that don't cause that much disruption or are very similar to what you would like, they're consistent with your preferences and local values, can be handled at a staff level, so they're a much more efficient process.
So we could actually say, "We got it, but we need an extra 90 days because we're swamped," or does this now mean the addition of a person who becomes the specialist for towers?
Some cities do have a designated person. I think it's better to have them, the knowledge base spread out. But let's just be clear about what the timeframes really mean. So let's take a 150-day for a big new site, right? The first 30 days gives you a chance to review the project for completeness and pause the clock if it's incomplete. So that's pretty normal. The clock never restarts, not like the Permit Streamlining Act, but it does pause in place. After that 30-day review period is done with, the project is deemed complete by federal law, and it can only be told and paused again by mutual agreement of the applicant and the city. There's an incentive to do so, because once the project is denied, or if the city fails to act on that application, the applicant has a 30-day statute of limitations to sue you. And in my experience, they don't like to do that, but because the statute of limitations is so short, they have to. Therefore, the tolling agreement is preferable to all parties, but we don't want to bank on that.
Okay. One more question from Mr. Conley. The locations. The first slide for the locations, we'd rather have them in versus where we wouldn't?
Sure.
That one. Why, on the preferred locations in order of preference, why would the city-owned structures be more desirable than parcels within the commercial zones?
We felt that the small cell facilities that were shown in the overhead that are being disseminated in the community would fit better in the right-of-way. I mean, they have specific parameters under which they design, you know, those facilities for the right-of-way, and so we'd rather see the smaller system laid out than larger-scale facilities that you might see on a commercial property.
Okay, all right.
And Chair Kramer, if I could just supplement that.
Sure, please.
The, there's state law that says we cannot say no to facilities in the right-of-way, and so to the extent that we want to encourage them to be deployed on existing facilities where we have a greater degree of control because we own that facility, we've ordered the preferences so that that's the highest level of our, like, that's the best first option for them to go for.
Okay, we want to play nice.
Right.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. Commissioner Rosler, please.
Mr. Conley, in the permit application, it talks about having a radio frequency compliant report. Do we have consultants that review that and let us know whether it's in compliance or not? Is that part of his responsibility, or do we have that capability in-house?
We have had some reports come in that have been just reviewed at the staff level, but we haven't had expert review, just really because they haven't raised the level of controversy that might require that, but that's certainly available if it's something that we need to do.
Okay, all right. And do, does the city get licensing or additional fees if the facilities are located in the right-of-way?
Yes, if they're located on city poles.
Okay, all right. And the part about the Streamlining Act applies to just about every project that comes in that's discretionary, right? There are, there are specific timelines that if the city doesn't act, it's deemed approved, and so the staff is well aware of what those guidelines are and makes sure that a project isn't complete until they're ready to take it forward. So it's...
And with respect to the timelines in the ordinance, you know, that's all handled and reviewed by staff, so that stuff will come before the Planning Commission and decision-making capacity, but all the processing and timeline meeting is at our responsibility.
Thank you.
Commissioner Garretson, please.
I noticed that public schools are not listed here. Could you explain that? I think I know the answer, but...
We have seen a propensity for locations of public schools because the city hasn't taken zoning authority in some of those situations and let the school board decide, so a lot of the carriers have figured that out and tried, now they're going to public school locations. We don't necessarily think that's the best place for these types of facilities, so that's why it's not included.
But right now, the school board approves those.
Right.
Okay. Second question. How do you, how does a applicant prove that they couldn't get another location?
It's a burden-shifting framework back and forth. So the, it falls on staff's responsibility to ask the questions. Show me where you could not get a lease. Show me why the site was not technically feasible. And this legal standard that's been handed down from the Ninth Circuit is a meaningful comparison, a comparative analysis. So they can't just tell you, "I couldn't get a lease," right? Or, "It won't work there." Those aren't meaningful comparative analysis. They have to say, "We talked to the landowner, here's their phone number, they said no," right? That kind of a thing.
These regulations will not be retroactive. In other words, we can't go to a provider who is putting a bunch of antenna on water tanks and say, "Now you have to cover those differently."
Only if they want to expand the facilities. So if they fall under the umbrella of 6409, they have some rights to expand, but outside that capacity for new installations, we would have review authority.
But, but not ones that are already there?
Not retroactively, no.
Okay. Finally, the equipment of buildings, in terms of generators, that sort of thing. How much authority do we have to, or does the city have, to make sure that those buildings are properly maintained in a safe manner, especially when they're around public right-of-ways like parks?
So our current ordinance provides us more discretion in the actual agreement if they're on city property, and so the ones on park property, for example, we have an agreement with those between the city and the provider to locate there because it's a city-owned property, and so under that agreement, we have more maintenance authority. Under our code right now, that's, it's pretty limited. The recommendation before you tonight gives us more authority because it has a standard condition that requires maintenance for every permit.
Is there a period of time in which they must comply with a request to fix a problem?
It's not specified, but I believe we have some administrative ability to review the permit if they're not compliant.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioners, any other questions? Or do we want to move forward with a motion or request anything to be changed, modified? I have no speaker slips from the public. With that said, Commissioner Carroll?
Thank you, Chairman. I make a motion to approve the resolution as written.
Commissioner Garretson?
I second the motion.
Any comments? Seeing none, please vote. Please let the record show that this item passes unanimously. Thank you. All right. Let's see, what's next? Commissioners, staff discussion, council action, and reports.
So it looks like our next meeting will be April 18th. We have a couple items that will most likely be on the agenda. We will not have a meeting for the first Tuesday in April. Some updates, the City Council on February 14th approved the enclave at Delby Corner. I may have told you that last time, so that's gotten their approval. On the 28th of February, the council discussed a proposed general plan amendment and zone change at the corner of Sycamore and Watson. This is a fairly large, about eight-acre vacant parcel at the southwest corner. It's owned both commercial and estate residential, and there's a developer that's asking for it to be re-designated to medium density, which would be 10 units to the acre, and they have a proposal that's roughly between seven to eight units per acre. The council reviewed it and asked it to be allowed to submit an application under the provision that they reduce the density and provide some additional parking and some amenities, so we'll see what they come back with. It will come before the Planning Commission for early design review if the applicant decides to move forward. And then on March 7th, they reviewed a proposed specific plan amendment to allow another drive-through in the downtown specific plan where the famous Dave's Restaurant is. There's a drive-through, it's a chicken place called Raising Cane's. It's expanding into California. They've opened up a number of locations up in Orange County, and they're looking to open their first in San Diego County in Vista, and so the council expressed majority support for that, and so they'll be submitting their application as well. And that's all I have.
And the proposal for the Raising Cane is, they're going to take it to the ground and start from scratch, is that correct?
Correct. It would involve raising the 6,800-foot restaurant that's there and building a 4,100-square-foot drive-through on the site.
Interesting. I will not be available for the April 18th meeting, so Commissioner Rosler, it's going to be yours. Reports, comments from the city attorney? Nothing? Reports or comments from the commission members? Commissioner Garretson?
Yes, I believe the last meeting or so, I had brought up the idea of listing all the vacant lots in the city so we could get some idea. Where does that stand?
So we've mulled over that at the staff level. That's an incredibly hard thing to provide. We can certainly give you a map of vacant properties, but in terms of what development potential there is, that's a lot more difficult. We are actually working with Sandag right now on our next growth projection to identify what our housing capacity is in Vista, and so they have a GIS layer that they've given us, which we've checked. And I think once that process is complete and we have some idea of where we think we have housing capacity, we can probably share that with you. I think that would be a better evaluation than total vacant land, unless you want to get into commercial or industrial as well.
Well, I think it would be a good document to have, what is vacant, regardless of what zone it's in, what, regardless, if for nothing else, so the citizens can see how much potential development there is down the road. You know, if people want to have more parkland, would be good to know where the open land is. You know, how do you pay for it? How do you, you know, how do you acquire that land?
So you're just referring to vacant, undeveloped, non-open-space recreational land? Land that could truly be developed, because there's a lot of undeveloped land in Vista that's designated for that exact purpose. You're just talking about where there's opportunity.
Just general.
Okay. We'll see what we can do.
Is that a difficult task?
It takes a fair amount of staff time, truthfully, to give you accurate information. We have a layer from Sandag that shows vacant property that's probably 10 years old, and so we have to have a staff person go through and field-check all that or check it on GIS. So there's a fair amount of labor involved in getting it done and giving you a good work product. So when we have time, we can certainly do that, but we have a lot of paying customers right now that are trying to get through the process, so I can probably report back to you in April on how soon we can get that done. I just need to evaluate it a little more.
Well, let's say that that would require a lot of staff time. If we don't do that, and you're going to be working with Sandag on a report, how long before that Sandag report would be ready?
I think they're going to be done at the end of the summer. We'll probably have ours done before that, so we can look at it.
Well, quite frankly, I don't want to create extra work for staff, but I would like to have this information, but if it's going to be a matter of a month, and staff's going to spend a lot of extra time to get it to us a month or two ahead of time, I would say forget it, from my perspective.
No, it's not like that. I don't expect that. It's just, there will be some time involved. I'm not sure what kind of free time the staff has to do it, and so once I get that information, I can come back in April and tell you, "We can do it in the next few months," for sure.
Thank you.
One last thing. Mr. Conley, there's a house on Olive Avenue, just east of the project that we came before us last month, where they're, single-family, breaking down the lot with the private streets. And this house, the windows are gone and it's boarded up, but people live there. Do you know anything, or should I email you and/or Patsy the address and see?
Well, if you think there are people that aren't living there legally, yeah, we can have code, and the sheriffs go check it out.
Okay.
Sounds like what, but that's not a problem if you give us, if you email us and let us know where it's at.
I will do that tomorrow. Okay, I have nothing else on the agenda, I don't think. Nope. We are adjourned, 7:07.